Just so we can hold on to an audience. Good evening and welcome to the Norfolk Board's elections meeting of Tuesday, April 2nd. My name is Jim Leehan, to my left is my partner, Mr. Calcutt, to his left is our interim town administrator, Mr. Linmark, and to his left we have Nancy who is subbing for Susan this evening. Thank you very much Nancy for joining us, we are very appreciative. I'd like to remind everybody that this meeting is being both audio and videotaped, is available through the Norfolk cable. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Linmark, would you read the agenda, sir?
Absolutely, so quite a full agenda. We're gonna move the action item of please consider approving the Verizon and N-Star easement for Norway Farms as their first item. We have a water rate hearing. Then we'll move into executive session to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body. The chair so declare the subject is clerical grievances. Several action items including approving the water rates for fiscal year 20. Consider removing the special employee status from the position of senior clerk in the assessor's office. Consider the town not exercise its right of first refusal for property located at 110 Park Street. Consider reaffirming the vote of fire chief appointment. Consider approving the fire and police union contracts, which we're gonna defer. Please consider approving a one-day liquor license to serve beer and wine at the Norfolk Cultural Council's annual juried art exhibition on Saturday, April the 20th, from 5:30 to 7:30. Consider approving use of Town Hill for CPAC post-race activities on Sunday, May 5th, from 10:30 to 1:30. Race was previously approved. And then consider approving the Garden Club of Norfolk request for use of Town Hill Saturday, June 15th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 for rededication of the Rose Garden. And lastly, consider approving the families of Exhale Dance Studio request for the use of the gazebo on Thursday, April 25th, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then approve the minutes and any other unanticipated business that may become before the board.
The only other item, I will just update my partner on my meeting with the superintendent of schools regarding KP budget, which was a very good meeting, just as an update. We're gonna have you folks come up first. Get the, I think Kevin, I know you're pretty familiar with this, as am I. I know you're anxious to get our shows on cable. Electricity and those high bills are coming very quickly now. But you have, do we have the appropriate documents? First, I guess, do I have a motion to approve the easement for Norway Farms?
So moved.
I will second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let us sign those documents for you.
Thank you.
There's three of them, so, one I didn't, I didn't have enough of the... But they need to be notarized too, I believe.
And several people commented that that was one of the better ones they heard.
There we go.
I'm watching him do it now.
Thank you, sir.
That's what I'm thinking.
Now these need to be notarized.
Yes, sir.
I can do that.
You're notary?
Yes, I am.
Perfect.
It's gonna take a few minutes, though, 'cause I don't have my stamp down here.
I could come back in the morning if that's more convenient.
Perfect.
Absolutely.
Where is your office?
Second floor. He has the throne room. In the very front of the building. He has the view. So it's the finance office on the second floor.
Thank you.
And I'm there after 7:30.
Oh, great.
Come in anytime.
So far.
We only need this one signature, right? I'll double check, but yes. Okay. If I'm not there, I'll have it in an envelope for you. So you just, there'll be two girls in there, you just ask for the envelope for Norway Farms.
Good luck with all that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
So you were asking about the signatures, there's two spots on each one and there were three documents.
Yep. Well, we'll double check. Make sure that we've got them all in the right place.
You do.
Also, we're good.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Not at all.
Thanks Kevin, good to see you again.
You as well.
Have a good evening.
Good job.
Two-two. We have the, we closed the water hearing, but we have it listed as continuing, so I would ask for a motion to reopen the water hearing and we'll then close it to follow with the adjourned, so states. The voting is actually... We did, we did it for last meeting, yeah.
So I would move to reopen the water rate hearing.
I will second, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any comments or discussions on the water rate? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I would move to close the water rate hearing.
I will second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, we have an executive session. I would anticipate maybe 10, 15 minutes tops, if that.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably even less, probably five to 10 minutes, no more. Do I have a roll call vote to go into executive session?
Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Jim Leehan, aye. We will be returning, then I would say no more than five to six minutes. It should be fairly quick, so, we'll be right back. If you would close that door, please, when you're done.
You're on approving the water rates next.
Welcome back, thank you, that was brief, we are now back in execu, in regular session. Next item, Mr. Linmark.
Approving the water rates for fiscal year 2020.
For those of you that hopefully watched the public hearing that was held, I think, two weeks ago. Mr. McGee went through a very detailed explanation, have you received any additional comments that we have not seen?
I have not.
Okay. Any questions or concerns?
Like I said, from the get-go, I had worked through that with them early on in the process, so...
Okay, I as well. Do I have a motion to approve the water rates as presented?
So moved.
I will second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next action item is consider removing special employee status from the position of senior clerk in the assessor's office. Special status was voted back and given 1995, so Kathy Mullino at this time could also be on the personnel board and later on the board of assessors. The status has never been removed and the need going forward is non-existent. Where the special employee status goes with the position, not a person, would probably be beneficial to remove the status from this position at this time, as proposed by Carol Green's office.
Questions, sir?
None on my end.
Not on my end either, do I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is consider the town not exercise its right of first refusal, purchase property located at 110 Park Street.
This is what's known as 61A property, the town has 120 days in which to match the offer. The property was reviewed by Concom, CPC, Recreation and Affordable Housing Trust. In all instances, the boards all recommended not pursuing purchase of the property. I would concur with that recommendation. And you, sir?
I mean, as much as I would like to go against the content experts here in town, I think I'll agree with them as well.
You gonna go with them?
Yeah.
It'll be fine. Do I have a motion to not accept, I want to word this correctly. The town agrees to...
Not exercise?
Not exercise its right to purchase the property at 110 Park Street.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Or you could have foregone.
I'm sorry?
You could have foregone, I'm just saying.
It's written up in your packet.
We got there.
It is written up in your packet if you want.
We're good, next item. We did approving the fire union contract and the police union contract.
Well, we have, we have the fire chief appointment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that one.
Right.
Please consider reaffirming the vote of fire chief appointment.
So a little, a little background on this, and I understand that you had a chance to visit with Peter today.
I did.
I visited with Peter, Peter and I visited over the weekend. Chief, Deputy Chief Petrusik approached me over the weekend and subsequently, I believe you, today. You'll have to tell me, don't know, wasn't there. About asking Cole to reconsider and to reconsider his resignation and to stay with us for the additional year of his contract. In turn, I met with Cole and had long discussion with him about his view of that and would he be willing to do that. He said that he would if the board were to, so ask him to do so. I know, I can tell you, having known Cole for 15 years, I was floored when he turned in his resignation. There were personal reasons for his actions that are his to disclose. I've talked with him at length about that and he feels that he's in a better place and that those issues are now manageable for him and would not in any way interfere with his ability to hang in there for another year. So, with that said, what do you feel?
Like you had said, I had the opportunity to briefly talk with Cole to get a high-level overview of where he was right now compared to where he was a month and a half ago. Along the same lines as everything that you had said as well. I also got the chance to talk with Peter, who, you know, as you had said, agreed with the position and the new outlook on what the next year would hold. Personally, I would like the opportunity to maybe spend a little bit more time with Cole, if that's okay. I wholeheartedly understand where he's coming from, but unfortunately, I only had 15 minutes to spend with him today. And I'd just like to get to know a little bit more about where his head is right now. And understand a little bit more about what the next three, six and nine months looks like for him. I'm not saying one way or the other, I just would like a better understanding of where we are right now, if that's all right with you.
Very reasonable request, I have had far longer conversations with him, so you should have an equal opportunity.
Appreciate that.
Yep. So we will table that. We were hoping we could get a meeting next week when you might be available to sign the police contract.
Okay.
So, Wednesday? Wednesday? We'll have it ready by Wednesday, we have, it's in agreement, they have it, we just, they got it so late today, they didn't get a chance to vote.
Yeah, they didn't have a chance, yeah, yeah.
So...
Understood.
It's a good contract, they've been terrific to work with, they're always terrific to work with. And they've made a number of, I'm not gonna call it concessions, 'cause I don't think that's the right term. They've made a number of agreements that benefit the community and protect us and protect them. And I think that's a very good thing, and when we get the contract and vote it, we can go through that and share it with the public on what those items are, but they are terrific guys, they do a wonderful job, and this contract negotiation was very easy and very accommodating on both sides, so if any of them are listening, as always, we're grateful for not only what you do, but the way you work with us, it's been a great partnership, so hopefully we'll have that final. So are you available Wednesday at all?
I'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay. Any, any, let me think. I do have, I have one meeting on Wednesday.
Thursday?
Thursday better?
I do believe I am in town on...
Well, we can do Thursday. Thursday work better for you?
So long as I don't get singed during live fire training, yes.
As long as what?
I don't get singed during live fire training, I'm doing live fire training with the guys.
Okay. You're gonna love it.
Did I sign a waiver?
Well, Jack and I did that about 10 years ago. I don't know, are you going down to Southwood, where are you going?
25 Rockwood, I believe.
Oh, okay. Oh! They're taking the house down. You're gonna, you're gonna love it. When we went in and put it out, put the fire out, it started up again, we went in, you know, each of us goes in with a fireman and so it was great training, and it's, it's an experience to learn what they do.
Yeah.
And how it works, and I'm glad you're doing it. It taught me a lot, I know it taught Jack a lot, but a quick funny story, I went in with Mark Cancer, who is retired from the fire department, and one of the, you know, you've got all of, you'll learn, it's about 60 pounds' worth of equipment that you're carrying on in there. And, and it's hot, no joke about it, it's hot. And you can't see a thing.
Yeah.
And you, you know, he's telling you how to fight the fire, and there's an alarm system that when you get down to about two minutes of oxygen, and they can track where you are at all times, and you know, you have to get your butt out of there, and he's telling me, you know, don't hyperventilate, you're gonna get excited, you know, all of that, and you know, so we're in there fighting, his goes off before me. So it, it took many months for him to live that one down.
That's funny.
So, you wanna do Thursday?
Yeah, Thursday sounds good, so I believe training is at 8:00 a.m., so I think we could safely say...
You, you're gonna, at least three hours, three or four hours.
So I'll say... 3:00 p.m.? Or earlier?
Well, you're gonna need time to clean up and all that good stuff, too, so... 3:00 p.m.'s good by me.
You don't want me to come in here like a toasted marshmallow?
You can if you want. What's your, 3 o'clock?
3:00 p.m. will be fine.
3:00 p.m. Okay. And it would, this'll be no more than 10 minutes, so can you also have an opportunity to visit with Cole before that?
I think so.
So we can make that decision that day as well?
I think so.
Perfect. So Nancy, if you would post us. The subject is signing of the police contract and discussion and reappointment of fire chief.
Potentially a fire contract also.
Put it on there, yeah, we might have that done as well, let's, yeah, good point. We can always, if not ready, we can shelve it. Okay.
Very good.
Good.
Next item, please consider approving a one-day liquor license to serve beer and wine at the Norfolk Cultural Council's annual juried art exhibition Saturday, April 20th, from 5:30 to 7:30.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, consider approving use of Town Hill for CPAC, S-E-P-A-C, post-race activities on Sunday, May the 5th, from 10:30 a.m. to 11:30, I'm sorry, to 1:30 p.m. Race approved at a previous meeting, this is for the gazebo Town Hill use.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item, please consider approving the Garden Club of Norfolk request for the use of Town Hill on Saturday, June the 15th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for a rededication of the Rose Garden.
I move to approve the Garden Club of Norfolk's request to use Town Hill on Saturday, June 15th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And please consider approving the families of Exhale Dance Studio request for use of the gazebo on Thursday, April the 25th, from 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
I move to approve the families of Exhale, Exhale Dance Studios' request to use the gazebo on Thursday, April 25th, from 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item is approving the minutes.
Just needed.
These are yours, Mr. Calcutt, I believe?
Yes, they are. I move to approve the minutes for March 13th, 2019, and March 27th, 2019.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Nancy.
I have one additional just update for you. I met with the superintendent, your meeting tomorrow with the other town administrators.
And the superintendent after.
And the superintendent. And I'm gonna, I'm, the superintendent is going to the advisory board tomorrow evening to present his budget, and I said I would go with him. I know I've said this before, but this is without question the best budget I've ever seen from King Philip. In all the years, 15, well, add six on the school committee, 21 years of working on King Philip budgets, this is the best job I have seen. It's very well done, it was done from the very get-go, efficiently and reasonably. Last year was not that, we had marked improvement last year, but this year has taken even a greater step forward. Our numbers are very manageable, it's a 3.58% increase on the budget. Was a funny discussion that we had at particular point in time when I was visiting with him, 'cause somehow the numbers got a little twisted. Maybe it was more in my mind than anything else, but we had said it originally at 3%, well, 3.58 actually ends up $18,000 less than what our 3% projection was, so we ended up actually getting a lower number than we anticipated. And it took Paul about 10 minutes to get that through my thick head, because it was just so illogical to me that that would be the case, but he was right. But I brought this for you, can I have another copy?
Thank you.
It's, it's a very nicely done budget, and I will be there to help reinforce that to the advisory board with Paul tomorrow night. We're hopeful that one of the other towns, Plainville's kinda out of the question, 'cause they're, they're just, they're struggling big time. We're hopeful that, have you talked with Kevin at all?
Not as of yet.
Okay, so you'll know tomorrow.
I will.
And you'll let us know.
Absolutely.
Good. Hopefully, they'll be in a position to support this. It's a good budget, it, it puts some stuff back in that they desperately need that they've taken out over the years, but in a very reasonable fashion, he's made significant savings in special ed. It's a good budget. Might just sense where I thought.
Great news.
So, we'll be anxious to hear, I'll rent them.
Yes.
He, he indicated that he was somewhat hopeful that that might work out. 'Cause Plainville and Rentham, I think their town meeting is on the same night.
I'll know at noon tomorrow.
Okay. That was the only other item I had. Anything on your side?
I saw there was a discussion item for Fails Park.
They, Barbara asked to defer that till the 16th.
Okay.
So we will defer that to the 16th. We have Running Gun coming in on the 16th, Dave DeLuca will be here for that as well. I know you've seen the correspondence, my response was from DeLuca, so it wasn't just made up. We do not have the legal right to stop anything in advance of the event, regardless of how we may or may not interpret it. 'Cause what is advertised and what occurs may not be one and the same, so it has to actually occur. So we'll work our way through that on the 16th. Todd, anything else on your end?
I do not.
Budget is balanced?
Budget is balanced still. Till tomorrow.
No, the budget is balanced, you've done a nice job on it. It's been a good partnership. We've agreed on more things in the last two weeks than we've agreed on in the last six years, so that's not bad.
That is true.
Little exaggeration on that, but anyway. Sir?
Nothing else from my end.
Okay. Nancy, do we miss anything?
I think we have it all.
What looked like a long evening turned into a fairly quick evening, let's take it through the two, well, we had to defer a bunch of stuff here, but...
Oh wait, the liquor license, oh you got, you did that one?
We got that, we got that, yeah. And our new town administrator will be here on the 16th.
That's right.
So that will be exciting as well. Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I will second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for a brief evening, and we will look forward to seeing, we do have a meeting on Thursday at 3:00 in the afternoon for those three items, and our next longer meeting, if that's the correct way to say it, will be on Tuesday, April 16th. I'm sorry?
Regularly scheduled.
Regularly scheduled meeting, thank you, sir. All right, hope everyone has a safe evening.